Okay, call the meeting to order. Uh, let's say the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It's alright. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Is there any objections? Alright, motion passes.
Want me to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, you have to do the first one.
No, no, okay, I'll do the first one. Okay. We're gonna make presentations on, uh, the people who served last year. Uh, the first presentation I'd like to make is to Rosemary Kyle, uh, an appreciation of her devoted and individual service as a 2000 Chelsea School Committee delegate to the Chelsea City Council. Uh, you wanna take them all, do them all together at the same time?
Sure.
Yeah.
Terry, we'll do them all together. Picture.
Okay, next on the agenda. We have Julio Hernandez, an appreciation of his devoted and individual services as a 2018 Chelsea School Committee delegate to the Shore Educational Collaborative on February 7th, 2019. Next award we have, certificate of appreciation goes to Kelly Garcia, an appreciation of her devoted and individual service as the 2018 Chelsea School Committee Vice Chair on February 7th, 2019. Come on up Kelly. Okay, we got the last, and we have a double dedication. Could've been a triple, but I guess she got one two years ago. This is an appreciation to Jeanette Fales for the year 2017 and 2018. Jeanette has been the, uh, chairperson for the last three years. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to her, you know, uh, it's, like I says, being chair is, you don't get many pats on the back, you know, and you, and you, you do a lot of work behind the scenes as I'm finding out. Jeanette, please come up and get your, uh...
Oh, wait, you already have my baby and you realize it?
We can, we all take a picture down here?
First, Principal Ron Schmidt, Principal of Chelsea Opportunity Academy. As you know, Chelsea Opportunity Academy only recently opened on July 1st, um, and we are, Ron is here to talk about the wonderful things that have been going on, but also a few, um, things that actually have happened that really indicate that people are watching and they're enamored with the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. So, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. The, um, first piece of business that I wanted to, uh, speak to the school committee about is the opportunity for our staff members to visit the schools where we learned a great deal about what it means to open up an innovative school, particularly one that is competency-based, and that is to allow our teachers to do an out-of-state visit to New York City where these schools are located. One was really focused on school culture and how to make an inviting place for overaged and undercredited students to feel welcome and to, uh, reach towards their diploma. And the other school that staff members would visit is the school that actually developed the competencies that we're using, and it would give our staff members an opportunity to see these teachers in action, as well as to see the software that we have, that is a software that allows students to see their progress on a dashboard, their progress in each of the individual core areas, as well as their attendance, and how that is leading up to their, meeting their graduation requirements. Both of these things have a lot of depth and sophistication, so to actually see it on the ground would be hugely valuable. Both the Bar Foundation and Spring Point have supported this initiative, and they provided us with a grant that would allow the teachers to go and to cover all their The other, uh, the other piece that I came to speak to you tonight is both a, uh, a real honor for me to be able to, to tell you that the Chelsea Opportunity Academy has been recognized as a school that has made incredible progress, particularly in how we manage both the design process and the implementation. Spring Point and Bar have spoken highly about us outside of the state, and the Georgia's, uh, Georgia's gover, Georgia Governor Office of Student Achievement has invited me to be a keynote speaker at their conference in June on the 11th and 12th, and they have also approved that we bring a student along, as our belief is the students are, students are the center of our work. What more beautiful thing could we have is a student alongside me presenting what does it mean to be a student in our school? So I would need the school committee's permission to take a student to Atlanta and be a co-presenter in this, uh, conference.
And that will be on your agenda, and absolutely, um, all of the, the protocols will be followed in terms of the field trip policy.
Uh, the, aside from those two, uh, those two pieces of information, uh, what I can say is probably the greatest strength, uh, and thing that we're celebrating the most right now is the relationships we formed with some of the most needy students in the city, and that, uh, we are in daily contact with every single one of our students, whether they come to school or not. We are either reaching out, doing a home visit, uh, speaking to them by phone, by a special program we have to be able to send text messages, and, uh, there's one of the core values that the students, that resonate, resonates the most with our students, and that is at Chelsea Opportunity Academy, for both staff and students, every day is a new day. And what that means is you can have a tough day, you can, uh, deal with some kind of complicated issue, and you can walk in the next day and feel welcome. And, uh, that is something that not only our students, uh, recognize when asked, uh, but it's something that the people who have come to visit. We've been visited by, uh, three different schools, one from Boston, uh, one from Plymouth, uh, and a, uh, excuse me, two from Boston, one from Plymouth, and today we had a visit from the Department of Education, Niles Fuentes, uh, one of the people who's in charge of alternative education came by, interviewed students, interviewed, uh, teachers, observed some classroom activity, uh, and they also had a very positive impression of the ambience that is in our school. So I said that, I say that's probably the greatest thing we're celebrating, uh, in this first year. Uh, there's a lot of hard work ahead of us, as you can imagine, uh, but that is, uh, just a general update of, uh, what is happening to Chelsea Opportunity Academy.
So it's a great honor that, um, they have been asked to speak and to be the keynote speaker at this conference in Atlanta, um, but I would love to, um, open it up to you, and, uh, you can ask questions.
I'd just like to say, uh, I know how hard it works in, you know, the process of Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and I know I could speak for all my colleagues how grateful we are, um, for the work and effort that you've been putting in so far, and you know, you're my former assistant principal, and other than that, you know, I, I just wish you the best of luck in Georgia. I know it hasn't came to a vote yet, but I know it's gonna go through, and, you know, I just wanna commend the work that you've done so far.
Alright, thank you Julio.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I'd also like to add, um, no questions, I just wanna echo what Julio said, we thank you so much for everything that you do. Not every student is a traditional student, high school isn't for everyone, um, and you make it work, um, and so we thank you for that.
I, I appreciate that, thank you.
So wrong. Never learned how to pronounce his last name, but grateful, and I think, uh, for all that you do for our students, and we couldn't make, have made the best decision that having him as, you know, the principal of other school, and it's, uh, something that we feel really proud of having you in Atlanta, Georgia with a group of students. I, if you need a, an assistant, just let us know, we can all join.
Well, there is a, uh, the, um, governor's office is kind enough to provide a, uh, a honorarium for this. I will be receiving, in addition to all expenses, $3,000, of which, all of which will go back into the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, because I'm representing, um, uh, the hard work of many people, and I think that's the best place for it to go, and we have some great plans for that in the, uh, fall.
Well, Ron, first of all, thanks for sticking a note out all these years you've been with us. You've been, um, very helpful to the, the students at Chelsea High School, and do you need a chaperone?
I might.
You have to now.
Not the, not the students, Ron, do you need a chaperone?
Probably.
I just wanna say, the Patriots just went down, uh, Georgia, and now we're having Chelsea, what a great one-two punch we have in. Thank you Ron.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation from the Collins Center on the superintendent search update, and making the presentation is Ray Shertliff and John Brackett.
Thank you again, welcome back. Me, um, I just wanna give you a brief update on a couple items. I have been working, uh, with, with the chair on, uh, the screening committee invitations have gone out to all the people that, uh, we, we wanted to send them out to, and the chair is, is working on that. Uh, I would note that Terry Young has been a great help to me, and I'm sure to the chair in, in getting, uh, our meeting, the search timeline. If you look on the, uh, public school website, you'll see superintendent's search process link right at the very top. There's only one document in it today, and that's the search timeline that I gave to you on January 10th. John's gonna pass out, uh, what I call a recruitment flyer, but essentially this is what is going out to all of our networking contacts throughout the, the state and, and a couple of, uh, organizations, et cetera. Uh, this kinda identifies in very briefly the Chelsea Public Schools and the application process. It, it's a pretty standard, uh, couple of paragraphs there, uh, but before I send it out publicly, I wanted the school committee to have an opportunity to kinda look at it, if there's anything in there that you, uh, object to, uh, we can certainly edit it. Our goal is to get this out either tonight or, um, or, uh, tomorrow afternoon to a, a number of different contacts, and to get it posted on the website, so, uh, I don't know, whether you want a few minutes to, to, to look at it and get back to me, um, but it's pretty standard. I've been u- using a recruitment flyer since, um, probably, first was an HR director. I'm a one-pager, I like one-pages, and it gives applicants, uh, a look at the system, uh, responsibilities, and, and, and I know Mary is dealing with another issue around job description, uh, but this lays out the basic responsibilities and kinda basic requirements for any and all superintendents, pretty much in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the application process, John Brackett will be working with me as we, uh, screen resumes, and, uh, we're pretty optimistic that, uh, A, Chelsea is a unique school system, and we're optimistic that you're going to find some candidates. Obviously, there's no guarantees in life, but we're optimistic that you have so much going for you. The challenge is that you've had a very strong superintendent, and, uh, the challenge is taking the place of a strong superintendent, but the positive is that you've got a strong school system. With all your challenges, and all your funding challenges, uh, you're in a good place, in a good place to find a replacement, so, so we're, um, we're very optimistic about that. So unless anyone has any outstanding objection to this flyer, uh, I'd like to, uh, you don't need to vote on it, but I'd like to be able to send it out, so.
Sure.
So this will go out, along with the job description we got through email?
Well, the job description we will post on the website when the school committee adopts it. Uh, it's not as critical, but I did in this, I say refer to the school, school department website.
Okay.
The job description comes important as we, as candidates both apply and come in for interviews, that's when it's most important. But, you know, the, the superintendency is a difficult job, it's a complex job.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's tough to capture everything in two pages. That's, that's, you know, the draft that I prepared is two pages, it's tough to capture everything, it captures an awful lot. And, um, that will be available once you have approved it, it's your responsibility to, as a school committee, to approve this particular job description, in particular, so. And then that'll get posted on the website, once, once you've done that, so.
Ray, I have, I have a little concern. Our next meeting is March 7th, um, and you have the deadline on the application is March 15th.
Right.
So, would the, uh, that, would that mean the application for the, for the applicants would have to be in March 15th?
The applicant, the application deadline for applicants is March 15th. The job description is, is not absolutely critical to have, um, you know, I, you could, um, I, I know the process, I'm not involved in the process of getting that approval, but you could theoretically move the date up, I suppose, but I, I don't see it as a big issue, and I don't believe Dr. Brackett sees it as a big, big issue either.
If I, if I could, um, I, I think it just dawned on me, um, the, um, the job description many times is just something that we actually just keep on file in the HR office. In this case, you would be adopting, um, the, the, um, job description, but it's not necessary to start the recruitment and the, um, the seeking of possible candidates. This is actually what you need to get out there, to start the resumes coming in.
And on, on March 7th, our, our goal, uh, the timeline is that you, you, uh, receive the profile based upon all the groups with, uh, that we met with, uh, up to and including, uh, the 27th, 28th, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So the profile is important too, and that'll go up on the website as soon as you have received it, and, uh, there's still plenty of, of time, you know? Our experience is that in, in the first X number of days of a job vacancy, there aren't going to be a lot of people that will jump in, or if they do jump in, they may not be the strongest candidate. So there's plenty of time, there's about a five-week period of time, and, and, and having the profile helps both applicants and also candidates that we might invite in, uh, that the screening committee wants to meet, that's when the profile is important. And, and as we, um, develop, help the screening committee develop questions to ask of candidates, the profile will lay out to, to, to that screening committee, and to the full committee, the values that, uh, this community and this, uh, department, uh, wanna see in, in the next superintendent, so.
Does any, um, this is, does anybody have a problem with this? So everything is, everybody's fine with this? Okay.
And, uh, one, one last thing, um, I'm working with Terry, uh, and, and the chair on a draft of an email that will hopefully go out on, on Monday, that will let everyone in the, uh, uh, community, both in the school department and in the community, know about the focus group schedule. And, um, that will go out in all your connect ed pieces, and all your parent newsletters will go out to the Chelsea Record, um, uh, by Monday, so it gets in the, it gets to them by Tuesday, so it'll be in the, the newspaper, newspapers, uh, that Chelsea Record is part of. Uh, right now, we're looking at, um, at February 27th and 28th to have, uh, a meeting with the students at 1:30 to 2:30, 2:15 on, uh, Wednesday, the 27th, at the high school. We'll meet with any secondary teacher, it could be an elementary teacher, but any secondary teacher that wants to be part of a focus group that afternoon, uh, from, uh, what is it, 3:00 to, 3:05, or however long it, uh, you know, may not go two hours, but however many people show up. And then for parent and community members, we've set aside 5:30 to 7:00 on both nights, but on, on the 27th, it's the secondary teachers, students, and on the 28th, we'll go to the elementary complex and meet with any elementary teachers, and then we'll have another parent community meeting in the evening. I will have a separate meeting, and, and I, I could give you the, 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 the email that we prepared, but I need to make some adjustments with Terry. Uh, I, I will have a focus group for central administration, the rest of the community doesn't necessarily have to know that, but you know it, and then, uh, I'm gonna arrange a meeting with those principals who might wanna meet with me in some afternoon after school, again, ask them the same four questions. And, uh, really critical thing is there is an online survey link that will be in the email that goes out, and the questions are in English and in Spanish, and, and Terry will, will help me in getting that evaluated, et cetera, so we're, uh, I, I think we're gonna be ready to go.
When do you plan on, uh, putting out the application, what date?
When will you, I'm sorry?
When, when do you plan on putting the application out?
Uh, I hope to, send it out tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Yeah, I'm staying in a hotel nearby before I go to the airport tomorrow, and, and, uh, my plan is get it out tonight, certainly tomorrow, uh, you know, send it to all the superintendents and assistant superintendents, um, in the Commonwealth, will probably go out either tomorrow afternoon or Monday morning, you know? And then I begin other outreach, I've already started doing outreach, and we'll begin other, other outreaches, uh, next week. So, um, the last email I did with, with a project we've been working on, I think I sent out to whatever, 74 contacts, not including the superintendents association. So, people will know about the vacancy, but it's, it's the person-to-person networking and recruitment that's pretty critical too, you know? Uh, you've got so much going for you as an urban district, and that's the plus side, it is, it is a, a, a challenging, exciting opportunity for, uh, people that have had educator experience, whether they be principal, whether they be assistant superintendent or superintendent, so, we're pretty optimistic about, uh, the pool, so to speak, you know? I'd like to make some guarantees, but, you know, there are no guarantees in life, but we've, we've been through this process for a while, and we wind up having a pretty good pool to bring to a screening committee. And you've got a, a large screening committee, uh, but a very representative screening committee, and I think that will be obviously to your benefit. And I think that's it, other than that, we're meeting the timeline that I laid out, and, um, we will put this flyer up on the, uh, the website tomorrow, uh, on the superintendent's search process link, and, um, I think that's it, did, did, you have a question?
Anybody have any more questions? Good, Kelly, good.
Um, the timeline that you're referring to is the timeline that we looked at during the school committee retreat?
Yes. I can pass out one if you want another one?
No worries. No, I'm, I'll take one, yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, great, sorry, thank you, I appreciate that.
My colleague is good at passing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, she, Kelly, you done?
Yes, yes, I'm done.
Just saying again.
I just have a question on the timeline that you talked about, the focus group, you know, the 27th and 28th, which is on the parents' Friday. Um, I'm gonna have this, uh, focus board being the, you know, change some of them, like in the afternoon?
Because some of the parents that work part-time, but how do we gonna provide the outreach, are we gonna make ourselves flexible, like send them a flyer through, I know Terry's, you are a great supporter, um, with the, with the kids, so that they will be aware of, of this, and how can we be of support to, to you?
We, we all, we, not hope, we will be sending something out to principals and encouraging them to put it in whatever, whether it's a newsletter or to send it home, uh, you know, if, uh, you know, if, if the chair feels it's important for a flyer to go home, and I, you know, we can talk about the effectiveness of flyers, but, um, uh, so the principals can make a decision, or we can make a request for all principals to do X, you know, whatever, whatever you think is best.
We can also do it in both languages, on Facebook, Twitter, and the website, too.
Right.
Well, you just answered my question, 'cause I was gonna, I was like about logistic, like thinking translation and all of that other stuff while the focus group meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And this will go out in, in, in English and Spanish, this, this announcement, and, um, Terry is working hard to arrange for parent liaisons to be in, in the two parent community meetings. No habla española, muy bien.
Is there any other questions? Thank you Ray.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. If anybody's gonna up there speak, please give your name and your address.
We have a translator here that tonight, I believe, yes, thank you so much. I am sorry, your name? Fatima, um, I know Veronica, um, had emailed me. Our parent liaisons were unable to, to make it this evening, and Fatima, um, is a volunteer in the community, and so she volunteered to be here to translate. Um, Fatima, do you want to, um, you have to, you have to go to the microphone.
Just make sure that she gives her name and address, okay? Thank, thank you.
138 Chestnut.
138 Chestnut Street.
Fatima, you'll have to share the microphone, so, yeah, okay, great.
Sorry, um, her name is Brenda Rosa, and her address is 138 Chestnut, uh, Street. So she would like to talk today about the security of the Chelsea Public Schools. So today there was an accident at one of the schools, and, um, her son called her to pick him up, so she had to run to one of the schools and, like, get him, and she was really, um, worried about it. Okay, which school is it? Um, the Brown Middle School. It was the Brown Middle School. It was the Brown Middle School. So the alleged accident was a student, one of the students told another, well, told her son that there was a shooting outside of the school. So she was like really worried that her son was going to get shot. So she had to wait outside of the school in order to find out if her son was well because the police had, had to basically say that he was fine. So I guess the school was in like lockdown? So she would just like to know basically like the protocol, what's going to happen tomorrow, what is, you know, policy when something like this happens?
So this is public comment section and we actually do not respond to community members during public comment. However, I would like to ask the chair if we could suspend that rule for this one time, not setting precedent, and I could speak to the question.
We'll suspend the rules.
So Ms. Rosa, thank you very much. I was actually going to talk about today's incident anyway to the, to the school committee. You received an email from me as per the protocol, the process that we use as part of our safety measures. And Fatima, stop me if I talk too fast and you need to translate.
Okay, thank you.
So there was police activity in the community this afternoon. It was outside of the schools, it was on the streets. It had nothing to do with our Chelsea Public Schools students. However, when there is police activity in the streets, we want to keep our students protected inside the building. And so we call what is, we call a soft lockdown, which means that the daily life goes on inside the building, but we do not allow anybody to leave or anybody to come in. And that's why they did not let you in. Our, our staff and our administrators are well-trained in these safety protocols and it's not until the police give us permission to lift the soft lockdown that we then dismiss this, in this case dismiss the students because it was dismissed, it was after dismissal time. And the reason for the locking down and not letting anyone in, at that time, the police activity, police are searching for the perpetrators. And so we don't want to be the judge of who to let in and who not to let in because we could be letting in one of the people that they're actually searching for. We don't know. We're not, we're not involved in that level. In terms of tomorrow, your question about security for tomorrow, we will use the same protocols that we are trained in every single year. The middle school students do go through random searches. We will make sure that everybody is calm, but the students are also trained in these same safety protocols. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Going back in order or? Yeah. With the?
Public comment, yeah. Go back to public comment.
Yeah, go back to public comment. Motion to go back to public comment, please.
Is there anybody up there, anybody else who want to get up there and speak?
My name is Stephanie Simon. I go to Chelsea High and I live at 63 Clark Ave. Something that I just wanted to comment on was that I'm a student in an APUS class and I'm working on community service towards teacher turnover rates. And I feel like people don't really understand how it's affecting students directly at Chelsea High. And from my experience, it's, I am a junior now, I've been there three years, and I feel like I haven't solidified my education because teachers are coming and going, there's no emotional connection. It's, so it's kind of hard for me to transition to higher levels of classes when I feel like teachers don't really care because they're going to be staying for like a year and they already plan to leave. So there's no connection, there's no teachers that are dedicated to making sure that my education is what it should be. That's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Brianna Maldonado and I live at 37 Murray Street. And I also go to the same class as Stephanie does and I also am working towards, working on this advocacy project for teacher turnover rates in our high school. And I feel the same way as in the fact that I feel like I cannot connect with my teachers because the next year that I go to the school, they're not there anymore. And I feel like that really affects all the students at our high school because all of us really want a bright future and we look forward to getting into these competitive colleges. But when it comes to tracking down these teachers that we know that understand us as hard workers and understand us as successful students and can vouch for the fact that we work hard in our classes, it's hard to find that emotional connection with them when half of them are gone the next year that we return. One example would be the fact that many of us apply to these programs that really make us look like we are competitive and that we can do more than what people have stigmatized a school to be as like students that drop out or students that don't care about their education. It can be difficult when your teachers are gone and they're the only ones that can really share your story and ensure that you are a hard worker. And I find it heartbreaking when I see like, for example, guidance counselors that are in and out of our school are changing their students and the people that they need to know and they have to work twice as hard to get to know 100 students or so, just so that they can write their recommendation letters and really prove that we are the students that we say we are and prove that we are who we are on paper and prove that we are much more than what we are on paper. That's all.
If there's no one else, I'm going to close the public speaking. Okay, public speaking is closed. Okay, on to the next agenda. We have the report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent to come forward for the report on student achievement.
Good evening. In front of you, I believe you have a copy of the indicators of success for this month. Tonight, I'll be talking about the usual monthly indicators, but also I have quarterly updates and our usual mobility and grades data for second quarter for first semester. So if you could start on page three with attendance, you'll see that in grades two through five, we are hitting our annual target of 95%. And in grades one, six, and one, six, seven, and eight, we are very close at ninety, in the 94%. In kindergarten and pre-K, we are in the 90s and close. We're still working at the high school. And overall, as a district total, we're at 92.8% for year-to-date, which is slightly half a percentage point down from last, last month. We've had a rough month with colds and stomach bugs and flu. If you could turn to page four. Indicator four is around grade four grades. They are try, we are trying to raise achievement in these four core areas. You will notice that all four core areas have improved from last quarter, although they are not meeting our goal yet, but we are moving in the correct direction. If you could turn to page five and look at eighth grade with a C or better. In ELA, we are very close to our goal of 85%. And we are also above last year's mark in science. We are still working in writing and math. We are below where we ended last year, but are hoping to improve in the last two quarters of the year. If you could turn to page six, around dropout. This month, we have 50 students who have dropped out so far this year. We've had 10 in the month of January, leaving us with a percentage of 3.55%, which is better than last year, slightly better, not as good as we would like. And if you turn the page to page seven, you can see the details. Most of the students who dropped out in January were grade 11 students. We are continuing to struggle to keep our L population is one that we are working hard with. If you could turn to page nine and look at our mobility. Overall, our mobility rate is at 15.43%. You can see that in the little note at the bottom of the first table. Last year at this time, we were at 13.7. We've had 944 kids either come or go so far this year. And Dr. Burke will talk about the shifts in movement towards communities that are more affordable that we are seeing. And on page 10, finally, we have the semester grades for Chelsea High School for grades nine and 10. You have to, you remember that through our turnaround plan grant, we have increased time on learning in core courses for grades nine and 10. And we are seeing, we are continuing to see results. We've also done a lot of curriculum work and support as well as implementing I block. So you'll see that in quarter two, in grade nine, the passing rate or inversely, the failure rate, has remained fairly stable from first quarter. Just as a point of comparison, last year in quarter two, we had a failure rate of 47% and now we are at 29.7, just comparing the two years. In 10th grade, you'll see that it has increased, kids are continuing to struggle a bit, but you will see that those increases have mostly taken place in students failing, failing one grade. And we are standing with the total percent of students that are failing a, at least one course, if not more courses, at 39.8%. In comparison, last year in quarter two, we were at 51%. So it is an improvement, it's not, we're still trying to improve it, but we are moving in the correct direction.
And I do think it's important to note that we're seeing the turnaround plan restructuring efforts. We're gaining traction. We are improving.
Anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I guess not, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Chairman, I commend to the report the personnel update in closure B. We have 11 new hires, we have five resignations, retirements, terminations, and we have four promotions and transfers. We have nobody on a leave of absence. In terms of enrollment, I commend to the report enclosure C. Our enrollment at this point, our in-district number of students is 6,094. We have 184 out-of-district students for a total pop, student population of 600, 6,000, sorry, 278. I want to go back to the in-district number. The in-district number is the lowest it has been in seven or more years. I want to make sure we understand the difference because this is going to impact budget. January of 2018, 12 months ago, we were at 6,348 students in the district. January 2019, we are 6,094. It's a difference of 254 students. And so what we are seeing is definitely many families moving to communities that are more affordable, that Chelsea's prices are now pricing families out in many areas. We're seeing a pattern towards Lynn. And actually, I, I had a conversation with one of the, with Seth Daniels from the Chelsea Record. He said Revere now actually is more affordable in rents than Chelsea, is what he's hearing. So I will say that when we get to budget, we are going to have to really take a look at the enrollment numbers because as you know, our budget is based on the number of students. We get a certain amount of money per student. At the same time, I will, I will say that my colleagues, you know, Revere and some other places are also struggling with their demographics, not as much as we are, but certainly it's a trend that we're going to have to pay attention to for the next three years in particular. So I think one of the things we need to embrace is we need to really market our schools, market the success at Chelsea High School, especially with the early college program. That's, you know, the early college program saves students money long-term on their college expenses and loans. It's something that we can market and we can compete with students going to Northeast Volk and the charters and get some of our students to come back. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware of the dramatic changes and shifts that are taking place and this is within a 12-month period. In terms of announcements, Mr. Chairman, I have provided with you in your packet this evening a color copy of the state budget timeline. I sent out a lengthy description of where we are in terms of our fiscal 20 budget work as well as where we, we need to go in terms of the long-range goal of making sure that the Foundation Budget Reform Commission recommendations are adopted fully. When you think of just the immediate fiscal 20 advocacy, there are two places where we can hopefully get back about half of the $2 million gap that we're seeing in our budget today. One of them is our low income. Right now, we have approximately 315 homeless students. And yet, 83 of the 315 are not considered low income, which I don't understand how that can happen in the state. But that is worth $359,800. The other piece that would be a place for us to advocate is our ELL students. There is a new change this year in the governor's budget in terms of providing extra money for our English language learner students. It is well-recognized that our ELL students need more time, more resources, smaller class sizes, maybe tutoring after school. This year, however, the governor has decided to use the annual language proficiency test, the access test, to determine whether or not we're going to get that extra money. The access test is a score of one to six. The governor has decided that if a student scores a 3.9 on the literacy sub-test or a 4.2 overall, on the composite test overall, that they are considered now proficient and we do not need the extra money to support these students. that they are considered now proficient and we do not need the extra money to, um, support these students academically. And yet we know there's a difference between getting, getting language acquisition and language proficiency and then really being a second language learner and being able to read an English physics book or an English history book or an English written math book. And so many times that's where our ESL teachers come in, the support in the classroom. Many times it's the after-school tutoring, um, and support. But out of our two thousand one hundred and eighty-one ELL students, three hundred and ten scored either the three point nine or the four point two, which meant that we lost seven hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. You put that together with the homeless students not being counted as low income, it's just over a million dollars. And so those are two very specific areas. I'll be asking for a great deal of advocacy and support from you, um, in the next couple of months. And then we'll talk about the bigger picture. Um, and that's why I gave you the timeline. Uh, I have also given you the ARAMAC, our K-12 education dining update for, um, this, this, um, for January. And so it's always good to see what, um, Amanda Maurice and her staff are doing in terms of improving, uh, the cafeteria and what's being offered. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, um, provide to you the following announcements and dates. Tuesday, February twel- twelfth is an early release day in the Chelsea schools. Monday, February eighteenth through the twenty-second, um, is our, our February holiday, our February, February break. Um, there'll be no school, yet the school offices and city hall will be open. Wednesday, um, February twenty-seventh at five P.M., the school committee and the school department commu- will hold their community meeting on the budget. So February twenty-seventh at five P.M. in the council chambers. Thursday, February twenty-eighth, um, we have the, um, five P.M., the Black History Month celebration and the recognition awards at Williams School, if you're interested. And then also you are invited to, we are entering into negotiations with our Chelsea Administrators Union. The CAA is the acronym. You are invited to sit in and observe if you would like. Um, I, the only thing I ask is that you send your email of interest to the chairman. Um, the rule is we cannot, uh, you can come, but we have to make sure that we do not have what would be equal to a quorum of a subcommittee. So only a, a, two to three, um, actually maximum would be able to observe. And, um, Mr. Chairman, that closes my report for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive all the committee reports except for the rest.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. You want to go with this?
I want to mention some things that have been going on at the school. Uh, so the Club of Mock Trail has officially ended. Uh, I was actually in it and we ended up winning our last match again, Pop John, um, High School. Uh, it was, I, I want to say it was a really thrilling experience. It was fun to be, you know, being in the shoes of a lawyer and doing, you know, similar things. Um, also, I want to officially invite you to the NHS, um, induction day, which is going to be on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, juniors are going to be implemented in the NHS, um, society. And also, um, yesterday, twenty-five students with the highest grades, uh, they were sophomores. They attended, um, all-paid, um, legal seafood and they all seemed to really enjoy it. Um, I wish I could have been one of those students. Uh, but it was, um, I'd say it was, it must have been really fun. Um, also on Monday, Kantare will be meeting the governor. It seems to be like a trend. He has gotten a, a hold of those students now and they seem to really be holding, uh, forming a bond. Um, and also, next Friday will be senior night for Bowie's basketball team and cheerleaders. So that will be their last game. If you guys also want to, you know, show your support by coming to that game, that would also be awesome. And, uh, last thing, this is, uh, not going on inside high school, but it's for the youth of Chelsea. Uh, it's an event led by the Youth Commission. It's going to be ice skating on Saturday, um, this Saturday ninth, uh, six, starting at six P.M. all the way to eight P.M. So this is, um, only targeted, targeting students or, um, you know, the youth in Chelsea ranging from ages twelve to eighteen. Uh, so that's going to be happening this week and I myself am looking forward to it. I will be attending and, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Move on, uh, move on to unfinished business. There is none?
Yeah. Motion to, uh, go out of order and vote on the last item in the agenda. Um, that is, uh, consideration to approve the resolution to request the dedication of the Clark Avenue Middle School to Morris H. Seagull.
Anybody want a second on motion? Rosemary? Okay, let me, let me just read it and I'll turn it to you, okay? All right, Ms. Carlisle moves to approve the resolution to request the dedication of the Clark Avenue Middle School to Morris H. Marvie Seagull. Uh, Rosemary has a little, um, saying for us, options are saying, that she has some, uh, things that she'd like to say about Mari.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been a friend of Mr. Seagull's for many years. Um, he was a mentor to me and a friend and, and a wonderful father and grandparents to, um, three beautiful children. Um, he was involved in a lot of things in the Chelsea Public Schools and he's done a lot to this community. So I felt at this time, we should be naming the Clark Ave. School the Morris H. Seagull Clark Ave. School. Whereas the Chelsea School Committee, Schools and have recently rebuilt the, um, Clark Ave. Middle School and at Clark, Eight Clark Avenue. Whereas the Chelsea School Committee would like to dedicate the new facility in honors Morris H. Seagull. Whereas Morris H. Seagull was a graduate of Chelsea High School, a longtime resident and beloved community member. Whereas Morris Seagull was a United States veteran of World War Two, serving three years in which he included eighteen months in the South Pacific. Whereas Morris H. Seagull began his teaching career in the Chelsea Public Schools in nineteen forty-seven and dedicated educator in the Chelsea Public Schools for thirty-six years, serving as a teacher, a principal, and assistant principal. Whereas upon his retirement in nineteen eighty-two, Morris H. Seagull ran far and was elected to the Chelsea School Committee, where he served for, as a member for twenty-nine years. Now there be, be resolved that the Chelsea School Committee requests the city manager to begin the process to dedicate the Clark Ave. Middle School after Morris H. Seagull. And for here to, to let it be named the Morris H. Seagull Clark Ave. School. I'm bringing this to the members of the school committee and can I get a roll call vote? Is, is that appropriate? I'd like to have a roll call vote on this, uh, motion that I'm bringing to the committee because I feel this is an, um, a very special person. And I think we should be, uh, doing more to, for the people in the community who stayed and was educating the students in the city of Chelsea. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Before we take a roll call, does anybody want to speak?
I just have a quick question. So are we changing the name of the school? So it's no longer the Clark, it'll be the Morris?
Morris H. Seagull.
No, it, it, well, yes, but it's the, it's, it will be the, um, Morris H. Seagull Clark Avenue Middle School. Similar to what we did at the Early Learning Center, it's the John Silver Early Learning Center.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Before, I just want to say something. I just, you know, I knew Mari, Mari was a principal of mine. And, uh, all I can say is Mari was a good guy and he loved Chelsea, you know? And, um, that's all. I'll leave it at that. Uh, can we take a roll call? Terry?
On the motion to approve the resolution to request the dedication of the Clark Avenue Middle School to Morris H. Seagull. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Her, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, um, say to the, the school committee, um, Terry has the formal resolution. You cannot leave this evening until you sign it, so everyone has to sign it.
I'd like to make a motion to move that forward. I second that motion.
Okay. Onto, uh, new business. Ms. Velez moves to accept the Chelsea Public Schools calendar for school year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Do we need to take a roll call, Terry, or can we just? Is there any objections to that? No, okay. Next, consideration in action to accept.
I make a motion to accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year calendar.
Second.
Any objections? Nope. Okay, consideration in action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Atlanta, Georgia for one student and one or two teachers. Explanation, Chelsea Opportunity Academy Principal Ron Schmidt has been asked to be the keynote speaker at the annual school invitation summit hosted, hosted by the Georgia's Governor's Office of Student Achievement in Atlanta. Principal Smith is extending this opportunity to a Chelsea Opportunity Academy student, so they may be part of the presentation. Out-of-state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Roll call?
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the trip to Atlanta, Georgia for Mr. Smith and one student.
Second.
Any objections? Oh, okay. Ms. Alfaro moves to accept the envisioned math program at the Berkowitz School for grades one through four at the school's adopted math textbook. Explanation, the Berkowitz School has been piloting the envisioned math program in grades one through four for strong, with strong results. The envisioned program supports the instructional initiatives of the school such as universal design for learning. The funding for the program will come from the Berkowitz School budget and has already been planned for. You want to? You take, you, you want to take?
Yeah, it's money.
Okay. Yeah, we have to take a roll, anything to do with money has to take a roll call. All right, roll call?
On the motion to accept the envisioned math program at the Berkowitz School for grades one to four as the school's adopted math textbook. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman? Can I speak? My vote?
Hold on one second. I just, uh, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Principal Adam Delaney from the Berkowitz School. He was a mastermind behind this.
Yeah. So I was gonna, I was gonna say the, the same thing, uh, Principal Delaney. I know how much you, how much you are an advocate for design, um, universal designing for learning. And, you know, the work that you've done at the Berkowitz School is, is unbelievable and we thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Enrique moves to accept five thousand from the Nellie May Education Foundation for the five district partnerships. Explanation, the Nellie May Education Foundation is the largest philanthropy in New England dedicated exclusively to education. It has granted five thousand to the five district partnerships to support the upcoming educator showcase. The funds will be used for contractual services, maintenance and technical support, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eighty, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept five thousand dollars from the Nellie May Education Foundation for the five district partnership. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Onto that. Ms. Enrique moves to accept an increase of ten thousand in the primary violence prevention, DPH, for a total of, for total award of thirty-seven thousand for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Explanation, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Community Health and Prevention has increased its grant award to the REACH program from twenty-seven thousand to thirty-seven thousand dollars this year. The education, the additional funds will be used to support student assistant positions, youth leadership training, field trips, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eighty, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept an increase of ten thousand dollars in the primary violence prevention, DPH, for a total award of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept up to thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven from the University of Massas- Massachusetts Medical School for the SNAP outreach plan for two thousand nineteen. Explanation, the federal government reimburses Massachusetts for a percentage of the expenditures made in support of the supplemental nutrition assistance program. A staff member at the parent information center has been trained in how to take, how to intake families into the important nutritional program. And half of the time spent each quarter can be reimbursed by the state. Estimates, uh, that this could result in up to thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven in funding this fiscal year. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eighty, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept up to thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the University of Massachusetts Medical School for the SNAP outreach plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept two thousand one hundred and eighty-one from Spring Point for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Explanation, Spring Point, a nonprofit that works closely with the BA Foundation, has a mission to enable all students regardless of environment or background to succeed in high school, college, and beyond. They have awarded the Chelsea Opportunity Academy two thousand one hundred and eighty-one to allow staff to, uh, tour other schools with a similar student profile to COA. The grant funds will be used for stipends, travel, transportation, meals, hotels, accommodations, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eighty, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept two thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars from Spring Point for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept four hundred from the Neighborhood Developers on behalf of the Chelsea Thrives Opportunity Task Force. Neighborhood Developers on behalf of the Chelsea Thrives Opportunity Task Force has provided a grant of four hundred to support a fitness club mini-series. The club will target students identified as being high-risk for gang involvement, truancy, substance abuse, or a disengagement from school and community to join and engage in physical activity and community building. The grant funds will be used for supplies, equipment, and other expenses in the support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eighty, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept four hundred dollars from the Neighborhood Developers on behalf of the Chelsea Thrives Opportunity Task Force. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Moronsky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to amend to the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two, A, ensure that hourly rates are in complements with Massachusetts minimum wage standards for two thousand nineteen. Restructive the student work pay group. C, increase the daily rate for daily substitutes. And D, widen the salary range for classification H. Explanation, on January first, the minimum wage in Massachusetts increased to twelve dollars per hour. It will continue to increase annually until it reaches fifteen dollars per hour in two thousand twenty-three. At present, the district has to pay groups that are below the minimum, including high school, high school graduate. school, high school graduate, a maximum eleven dollars per hour, and I L P, child care assistant, at eleven fifty per hour. This action will increase each of these rates by one to two, one to twelve dollars and twelve fifty, effective January first, two thousand nineteen. This action will also increase the daily rate for daily substitutes from eighty to ninety per day, bringing the position to equivalent of thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents per hour. Restructure the student pay group to include high school students, students with one to two years of advanced education, and students with three or more years of educational, along with associate pay rates, and widen the pay scale for classification H., assistive, administrative assistant, computer technician, outreach worker, and internship manager, so that it's, is from forty-six thousand eight hundred to fifty-eight thousand eight hundred instead of forty-six thousand eight hundred to fifty-five thousand eight hundred. Staff have indicated that these modest changes will not affect the two thousand nineteen budget. Roll call?
On the motion to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent the motion carries.
Can I make a motion to waive the communications?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to waive the communications?
I second the motion.
Any objection?
No.
No, motion passed. Okay, we're going to announcements. Does anybody have an announcement? I, I actually have one, but I'll go. I, I got a phone call the other night from Herbie Cooper Smith. He was going to come up here and speak tonight, but he couldn't make it, and he wanted me to invite all the school community members, and I, I guess he already spoke to Dr. Bork. He's having an eighth birthday party on July twenty-seventh at Chelsea High School. This man and family, this man and his family has given many of scholarships to the Chelsea students since I've been in high school. So he, he's invited the whole school committee. I asked him what the dress is, he says he'll be wearing a suit and tie, so it's probably a little bit formal, and it's no cost, and it'll be dinner and drinks, and there's about four hundred people expected to go. So I just want to let you know, everybody here is invited. Yes, Rosemary?
I would invite people from Franklin, who doesn't want birthday presents, but make the money collected to go to scholarships, and that's how he raises money for scholarships for the Chelsea High School students. So he doesn't want presents, but if you'd like to make a donation, all donations will go to the Chelsea High School Scholarship Fund.
He actually did this, and I don't know if it was his seventieth, or, or was it earlier?
Seventy-fifth, too, I think.
But the last time he did it, he raised twelve thousand dollars for the Chelsea High Scholarship Fund, so it's, it's definitely worth looking into. It, it goes to a good cause.
Yes, Yacina?
I have an announcement for the week of vacations for the students, that there will be a Leadership Institute at the Chelsea Collaborative. It's going to be on the February nineteenth, the twentieth, and stay safe and warm. I know it's going to be a nice weather while you're on vacation.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, just don't forget, we have to sign the resolution for roll. Not, screening is adjourned.